I now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, April the 8th, 2019. And we will begin our meeting with prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor McHenry.
Thank you. This evening, I have the great privilege of having a former first grade student of mine, who is now a youth pastor at Chapel Rock Christian Church on the west side, to lead us in prayer. And it is such an honor. I had him and his sister both in my class back at Mill Creek East. And it is an honor to have someone and see what a fine young gentleman he has turned into and how he is doing such good work in our community. So, I'd like to go ahead and introduce you to Pastor Nick Wilks, and he's going to lead us in prayer.
Thank you. Let's bow together. Lord, I am so grateful for this great city in which we live and all the men and women, citizens, together that make it a great place. Lord, I'm so grateful for the behind-the-scenes work that this council and so many others do to be able to tirelessly lead the charge in making this an even better place to be. And so, Lord, I'm praying your blessing on all that happens here tonight. I'm praying your wisdom for all the decisions that are ahead. I thank you for the passion, the leadership, not only of those on this council, but the passion of just concerned folks that are engaged in all the processes that happen here. So, Lord, we look to you, we pray for your wisdom, and we thank you for all this, in Jesus' name. Amen.
And in sticking with the teacher in me, one of my former principals, and I believe he was principal when Nick was in my class, always wanted us to remind our students to think about the words, not just say the words to the pledge, but think about the true meaning. So, as you say the pledge tonight, do think about the meaning of those words. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, please select your green button to indicate your attendance. We have 24 counselors present. Counselor Clay has asked to be excused for the evening. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce a friend, a good friend of Indianapolis. He has served as, actually, for two years, as president of the Kiwanis West of Indy. Has been a major part of the Ben Davis Dads Organization for a long time and is also a community response, or community emergency response team member, Mr. Jason Ritchie.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I have a number of people, if you'll indulge me. First, I'd like to introduce a friend, or recognize a friend, who is a wonderful public servant, former trustee of Wayne Township, and he and his wife run a phenomenal food bank in my church, Annie Harris. I would also like to recognize the family. Oh, I thought I wouldn't do this. My family came to be here with me tonight, from Texas and from Pennsylvania. So, I'd like to recognize my sister Barbara, my brother David, and my cousin, who's like a sister, Joyce.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome and acknowledge our Pike Township trustee, Annette Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome a fellow Southside resident in Perry Township, current board member of the Southside Business Alliance, Public Information Officer for the Marion County Fair, and a board member on the Perry Township Kiwanis Club, Paul Inay.
Counsel Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize three people, Cherea Cotwell, you stand up, with Cafe, she's a far east sider, keep standing, Ms. Claire Pope, stand up, far east sider, keep standing, and our CL, Central Labor Union President, Mr. David Bride, far east sider, please stand up. And they say the east side is the best side.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce the man who keeps me in my own lane, my husband Craig Cordy.
Counsel Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce my fellow Ask Me member, Michael Torres, who is doing solo today, unlike that. But I'd also like to introduce Library Board Trustee Krista Carlino and our mutual friend, Keith Potts, who are here.
Counsel Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I heard somebody say the east side was the best side. Coming all the way from the west side, which is the real best side, is our superintendent, Dr. Butts, and one of our school board members, Brandon Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I know there's quite a few people from Wayne Township schools here, sitting with Dr. Butts, including his wife. So, if all of you would stand, I'm not going to name all of you, but I know all of you work very hard every day to educate our children, so if all of you would stand, I would appreciate it.
Greg, the next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District councils will be held in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, April 8th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I call to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Monday, March 25th, 2019, a copy of a public notice, a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 149, 152, 154, and 156, 2019. Said hearing to be held on Monday, April 8th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the public assembly room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance number six, general ordinance numbers 19 through 21. Special ordinance number two, general resolutions numbers nine through 12, and special resolution numbers seven through 11. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to add proposal number 205, 2019, to the agenda as the last item under Roman numeral seven, which is presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions for the action this evening. And counselors, you should all have copies of this proposal on your desk. I so move. Thanks.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. With the new motion, do I have consent to adopt the amended?
Consent.
Agenda. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is approval of the journals for March the 18th, 2019. Do I have consent?
Consent.
So, now proceed to the presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. And the first item on our agenda is proposal number 194, which celebrates the 75th anniversary of the United Negro College Fund.
Do you want me to do it? Do you want me to act? You're sorry. Do you want? Okay, we got it. Thank you, Mr. President. This is a special resolution celebrating the 75th anniversary of UNCF, United Negro College Fund. Whereas in 1944, UNCF was incorporated by Dr. Frederick D. Patterson, Dr. Bethune, and others as one of the nation's oldest and most respected educational organizations, UNCF has played a tremendous role in the advancement of African-Americans and their educational aspiration. UNCF was founded to raise funds and support member historical black colleges and universities, HBCUs, in doing the important work of educating African-American college students and developing future leaders. And whereas...
Whereas for more than 100 years, HBCUs have educated minorities, providing scholars with economic opportunities, and instilling great values. UNCF's recent landmark study, HBCUs Make America Strong, the positive economic impact of historically black colleges and universities, illustrates that HBCUs are known to annually contribute $14.8 billion to the total economic impact and 134,090 jobs to the nation. And whereas...
As the largest scholarship provider for students of color in America, UNCF supports more than 10,000 students each year through its scholarships. Internships, career preparatory programs, and since 1944, UNCF has raised close to $5 billion in support of their 37 member schools and has assisted nearly 500,000 students of color to and through college. And whereas, UNCF's impact across the state of Indiana is broad and deep, supporting hundreds of local students and advocating for equal education opportunities for African-Americans. Throughout Indiana, UNCF administers, on average, approximately 300 need-based scholarships annually to minority students for low and moderate income families through programs such as UNCF Fort Wayne Scholarship, UNCF Far East Side Scholarship, which, thank you, UNCF Anthem Corpus Scholars, UNCF Honda Scholarship, and UNCF Southwest Indiana Scholarships. And whereas...
The UNCF Indiana Regional Office, under the direction of Regional Development Director Andrea Neely, led to securing the second-largest gift to UNCF of $50 million from the Eli Lilly Endowment to launch the Career Path Initiative, which prepares students for the workplace, workforce. This includes UNCF's more than 800,000 annual scholarship dollars investment in students from Indiana to attend Indiana schools or UNCF member schools with one goal in mind, to get them through college and into the workforce. And whereas...
Whereas advocating for HBCUs has long been a part of United Negro College Fund's work, as the organization made the case for supporting the education of African-Americans throughout its history. With strong leadership from UCF President and CEO, Dr. Michael Lomax, UNCF Education Opportunity for All Americas, now therefore be it resolved.
Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the City County Council is pleased to recognize the 75th anniversary of UNCF. Section two, the council wholeheartedly thanks the UNCF for their commitment and dedication to the advancement of African-Americans and their educational aspirations. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has done. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance of IC 36-3-4-14. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President, with your, with your, I can't speak today, permission. Goodness. I would like to ask Ms. Neely to say a few words.
Thank you, Counsel, for the recognition of this historic year for UNCF. $5 billion speaks volumes to the students that across the country are changing our country. We couldn't do this without the community in which we have a presence, and that's throughout the state of Indiana across the country. I simply say on the behalf of Indiana students from Indianapolis, Fort Wayne, Evansville, thank you for the recognition and your continued support of our efforts through legislation, through grants, because without your support, we would not have our future leaders positioned to do what you're doing now, lead for a better future. Thank you.
Thanks, Stuart. That was wonderful.
Thank you. Do you want to say a picture? Yes. Yes. Mr. President?
for the American College Testing K-12 Champions Award.
Before I begin with this proposal, I'd like to say, somehow I dropped the ball along the way, because I'm sure that Counselor Evans would be glad to join us in this presentation, because this affects Decatur Township, so I would welcome Counselor Evans and Counselor The theme seems to be education tonight, and this special resolution recognizes Dr. Chris Duzenberry for the American College Testing ACT K-12 Champions Award. And Chris does a phenomenal job of readying students for a career and/or college, and I'm thrilled to be able to recognize her tonight. So, I'll begin and share the, share it with other counselors. Whereas, Dr. Duzenberry received her bachelor's degree from Indiana State University, a master's in secondary education from IUPUI, a master's in administration from Butler University, and an educational specialist degree from Indiana State University, and her doctorate of education from Oakland City University. And I feel very diminutive with all of that recognition. Oh, my goodness. Whereas, Dr. Duzenberry has served a total of 35 years in both private and public education, with 28 years in Decatur Township. She is currently serving as the Director of College and Career Readiness, with a pre-K to adult focus on readiness for post-secondary education and careers, and the development of multiple learning pathway options for students. And whereas...
Whereas, the ACT K-12 champions are individuals who have created or led a program that positively impacts their organization and community through improvised, through improved readiness for college and career opportunities for all. And whereas, Dr. Duzenberry was recognized for her consistent work toward closing the gap for the school district's underrepresented population in Decatur Township, including minorities, students living in poverty, and LGBTQ youth. Through her vision, Dr. Duzenberry promotes equality in education for both access and achievement, and to provide every student the opportunity to find success. And whereas...
Whereas, Dr. Duzenberry prides herself on providing students with the resources and tools they need to develop the requisite skills and obtain necessary resources to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally for post-secondary experiences and in the workforce. And...
Whereas, when asked about the lasting impact Dr. Duzenberry hopes to have, she said, quote, "I look forward to broadening our district's mission while playing a vital role in future career preparation for students by offering unique career-based learning opportunities." Now therefore...
Therefore be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the Indianapolis City County Council recognizes Dr. Chris Duzenberry as the ACT K-12 champion for 2019. Section two, on behalf of the citizens of Indianapolis, the council extends its appreciation and gratitude to Dr. Duzenberry and acknowledges the many contributions, accomplishments, dedication, and hard work she has shown toward her students and the community. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has done. And section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code, and I so move.
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
It has been my great pleasure to serve with Dr. Duzenberry on the Early Intervention Planning Council, and that was my introduction to her voluminous work in the community for students. So, Dr. Duzenberry, if you'd like to say a few words?
I would just like to say thank you for this recognition, and when Pastor Wilks today was talking about leadership and passion, both of those words describe Counsel Feaster, and I'm very proud to have known her, and I wish you the best of luck in your future, and thank you for inspiring all of us.
Thank you so much, Chris. And this, this is yours, the key.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 196, which honors Metropolitan School District of Wayne Township, Dr. Jeff Butts as Indiana Superintendent of the Year for 2019 by the Indiana Association of Public School Superintendents.
Thank you, Mr. President, and we're continuing with recognition of exemplary education Dr. Butts is joined by members of his staff and his lovely wife, Tammy, to hear a special resolution honoring Metropolitan School District of Wayne Township, Dr. Jeff Butts, as the Indiana Superintendent of the Year for 2019 by the Indiana Association of Public School Superintendents. And later in this presentation, you'll learn that he was one of the final four for the National Superintendent of the Year. I think that deserves a round of applause. Whereas, Dr. Jeff Butts is a graduate of Milliken University, earning a master's degree from Illinois State University, and his doctorate of philosophy in educational leadership from Purdue University. And whereas, Dr. Butts began his career as a public educator in 1992 in Forest, Illinois, as a high school teacher and advanced to becoming a principal at four different schools in Illinois and Indiana. Whereas, Dr. Butts has served 26 years in numerous positions such as bus driver, coach, teacher, athletic director, principal, and assistant superintendent. And whereas, Dr. Butts has been the superintendent of MSD Wayne Township since 2011. Seeing the decrease in property values in the district and student poverty increasing, Dr. Butts successfully led the district of more than 16,000 students through a $15 million budget reduction in 2013 and a $20 million reduction over the next five years. Dr. Butts then led the district in passing a $66.5 million referendum for additional operating funds. And whereas during his career, Superintendent Butts has received many awards and recognitions such as the Administrator of the Year from the Indiana High School Press Association, Minority Police Officers Association Award for outstanding work in the community, Indiana National Guard Awards for exceptional support to the community, and the Senator Center for Digital Education Top 30 Technologists, Transformers, and Trailblazers, and the District Five Principal of the Year from the Indiana Association of School Principals. And...
Surprise, surprise, we're here to recognize more greatness on the west side. Whereas, out of 13,000 superintendents in the United States, Dr. Butts was named Indiana Superintendent for 2019. He also was one of the top four national finalists for the AASAs National Superintendent of the Year out of the 50 states here in the United States. And whereas, Dr. Butts is devoted husband to Tammy, who is a lead teacher for Wayne Township's Volunteer Literacy Mentoring Program, HOST. They are proud grandparents and Leola, Leola? Daughter of Colin and Cassie Butts. And whereas, he continues to be an advocate for his district, which is exhibited through his constant presence at school, community events. And now thereas, would you like to finish? Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the City County Council recognizes Metropolitan School District of Wayne Township, Dr. Butts, as Indiana Superintendent of the Year for 2019 by the Indiana Association of Public School Superintendents. Section two, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes and appreciates Superintendent Butts's dedication and commitment to the students and faculty of Wayne Township schools. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. This special resolution was sponsored by Counselor Feaster and was passed by the City County Council this 8th day of April, 2019. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
It has been my great pleasure to work with Dr. Butts and his wife, and if I can take a small left turn, his wife is the leader for the HOST's program, Help One Student to Succeed in the Metropolitan District of Wayne Township. And it is an opportunity for volunteers to spend an hour with two second or third graders, helping them one-on-one learn to read, and it's a phenomenal program, and I really hope and pray that it continues. So, Dr. Butts, do you have a few moments that you'd like to speak?
Well, nights like tonight are certainly overwhelming, mostly because no one is able to be an island upon themselves. There are several individuals here that are behind me that are supporting me and supporting what we do in Wayne Township that I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce. Of course, my wife has been mentioned, she is my greatest supporter, she's also my greatest critic, and is able to keep me humble and make sure that I still understand that I'm just another guy. Behind me is Board President, Mr. Brandon Bowman, our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary, John Taylor, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Dr. Shanaya Suggs, our Media Specialist at Ben Davis University High School, the most successful early college high school in the country, which was introduced earlier, Mrs. Krista Carlino, our Chief Communications Officer, Mary Lang, and of course, former trustee of Wayne Township, Andy Harris. It's these individuals who keep me motivated, who push me to do the very best, much like you, to serve our community in Wayne Township. And one of the things that is critical to remember is you cannot lead if others will not follow. Simon Sinek has written many books, but one of which was Know Your Why. When you ran for City County Council, whether it was just a year or two ago or several decades ago, you did so because of your why. And in Simon Sinek's golden circle, he talks about the what, he talks about the how. But to really understand why we do what we do, you have to understand your why. And each and every day, as you go about your districts, as you go about your communities, you have constituents that try to share their why with you and try to... you have constituents that try to share their why with you and try to convince you that your why may be different than their why, and they'd like to change your mind. That's part of the evolution of leadership, and part of the evolution of leadership is also helping us to understand and stay true to our why. I have two medals around my neck that I received when I was in LA for the National Superintendent of the Year recognition. I have plaques on my wall, I have glass statues on my mantle. All of those are nice. This resolution will go beside many of those. But just a month ago, I received something in the mail from one of my teachers. It's a wooden compass. It doesn't move. If you've ever used a compass, you know how important it is to be able to find your direction, whether you're at sea, whether you're out in the woods, whatever you're using that compass for, it helps us to find our way. This teacher found a piece of maple, excuse me, it's a piece of walnut, a piece of walnut in a bundle of firewood that he had not yet burned, and he knew the value of that piece of maple and was trying to figure out what would do honor to that piece of wood. The idea of the True North compass came to his mind. When I received this in the mail with this letter, and I will not read the entire thing, but it struck me as, wow, what a neat piece, I wonder where I can buy one of those. And it wasn't until the next day that he sent me the link to the YouTube video that he had taken this block of wood and created this True North piece for somebody that he specifically had in mind. It brought tears to my eyes when I knew that that person was me. And on it, it says True North, and the arrow is pointed True North. The message that comes along with this is although compass needles are attracted to the Earth's magnetic north, which oftentimes will vary greatly, True North, or the Earth's geographical worth, never changes, it remains constant. And so, I appreciate tonight's recognition, but I would like to leave you with this. As you reflect back on what your why was and hopefully still is, and as you continue to make decisions that are in the best interest of all of the citizens of Indianapolis, I encourage you to continue to remember your True North. This sits on my desk, right next to my phone and to my computer, reminding me each and every day that we all have a True North, and nobody can divert us off of that pathway. Thank you very much for what you do, thank you for the service to our city, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
And the copies of your... Let me make sure both of them belong to you. Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks. Well, I'm not sure where all of you West Siders are going. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 197, which honors Ben Davis High School's television program for their achievements in the Indiana Association of School Broadcasters' state finals. Counsel Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we've heard a lot tonight about the great aside. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this proposal until our next meeting.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All right, very good.
Thank you.
That motion carries. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 78, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposal 78 and 124 together.
Second.
Thank you. Proposal 78, 2019, reappoints Greg A. Stowers Jr. to the Board of Public Health and Safety, and proposal 124, 2019, reappoints Logan Harrison to the Marion County Public Defender Board. Both individuals were present in the committee meeting, and the proposals passed nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second. The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 205, which recognizes retiring City-County Councilor Marilyn Feaster.
Is that going to be okay with you? Are we okay?
Should be just fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. City-County, City-County Special Resolution Number 16, 2019, a special resolution honoring retiring City-County Councilor Marilyn Feaster. Whereas Marilyn was born in Pennsylvania and spent several formative years in Ohio, but considers herself an adopted Hoosier, with Indiana ideas and values shaping her path in the political arena. And whereas Marilyn studied at Ohio State University and IUPUI and became interested in government and local community issues after moving to Wayne Township on the west side of Indianapolis. And...
And whereas, her interest in government continued as she helped with campaigns for various state and local officials, served as ward chairman and precinct committee woman, worked for over six years as the Controller of the Secretary of State, and was first elected to the Wayne Township Board of Trustees in 1999. And whereas...
Whereas, her continued success in winning contested races for that township board seat led to a run for City-County Council and then District 14 in Wayne Township in 2003, and Ms. Feaster was subsequently sworn in as a City-County Councilwoman on January 1st, 2004, and...
Whereas, her dedication to the community and to the people and to her desire to put the service back into the public service led to her reelection through the fourth term in now District 15, and continues to drive her to hold regular town hall meetings and correspond with constituents by an e-newsletter to keep her finger on the pulse of what the residents of Marion County and Wayne Township in particular want and need, and whereas...
Jefferson? No? Yes? No? Get it wrong.
Whereas, as a strong advocate for public safety and a supporter of law enforcement personnel, having been married to a fire department battalion chief for close to 24 years before his passing, Marilyn has served faithfully on the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, as well as using her financial acuity to serve continuously on the Administration and Finance Committee, even chairing the committee for a time. She has served on various other council committees, from time to time even as Vice President of the Council for a period, as well as other related commissions and boards such as the Early Intervention Planning Council, the Mayor's Entry Program Committee, the Internal Audit Committee, the Moral Efficiency Team, and the Medical History Museum Board, to name but a few. And...
And whereas, Councilman Feaster continuously uses her limited free time to help others, volunteering her time as a court-appointed child advocate, coordinating an annual job fair for over 15 years to connect people and jobs to employers to workers, mentoring students in Wayne Township schools, and being actively involved in the formation and development of the West Side Community Development Organization, Indy Gateway. And whereas, Marilyn has served this community well over 15 years, and upon her retirement, she will now have more time to spend with her three grown grandchildren, five, three grown children, five grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana... You want to read some of this? Okay. Okay. Section one, the Indianapolis City-County Council recognizes Councilor Marilyn Feaster upon her retirement, having served the citizens of Indianapolis and particularly Wayne Township diligently and with excellence for over 15 years. Section two, on behalf of the citizens of Indianapolis, the council extends its appreciation and gratitude to Councilor Feaster and wishes her well in all future endeavors. Section three, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature here too, which he has. And section four, this resolution shall be in full force in effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 36-3-4-14. This special resolution was sponsored by all counselors and is soon to be passed by the City-County Council this eighth day of April 2019, and Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. When we approached Marilyn and told her we wanted to do this tonight, in true form, she immediately said, will this be a roast? And we assured her while there was plenty of material over her many years of service where we could indeed do that, that we would not put her through that tonight. Not to say we can't do it at a future date, but we will talk about it at another time. I'm sure that everyone up here would like to take 10 or 15 minutes to talk about you and some things, but does anyone specifically have something they want to add? Counselor Jackson.
With your permission, Mr. President.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I just want to say you have a passion, a heart like mine for community. Thank you for the lunches and the talks and sisterhood. I'm going to miss you. Thank you.
It was mutual. Thank you.
Okay, that was a learning moment. We're not going to do any more off-the-cuff remarks about Marilyn. Let's just all give her a hearty round of applause. Thank you, Marilyn. And, Mr. President, with your further indulgence, I would like our honorary to say a word or two.
First, I don't know who that lady was you were talking about, but I'd like to meet her. I have some family with me, which is a very unusual thing, and you'll hear a little bit later how that has driven me, but I'd like to say hi to the family that is watching online tonight, and I hope some of my constituents are watching as well. This is, wow, been driving up to this for a while, and I promised myself I wouldn't cry, so I'll do my best to keep my promise. Like all of you, I've wakened nearly every day thinking about what's going to make my district and my constituents better. During that time, I've had no family here. I've had lots of good friends, good friends, but no family. Now I have a chance to be with family, live in a warmer climate, and after this last winter, I'm looking forward to that even more, and fulfill my dream of living near the water. So I am resigning my council seat effective April 17th at midnight that evening, and I noticed this morning that that was particularly significant because there's a public safety meeting at 5:30 that night. It has been a true privilege to serve with you and all the councils with whom I've served since 2004. There have been many changes over that time with the agreements with the citizens, with building Lucas Oil Stadium, with the merger, with the Super Bowl, and selecting the new hotel, and Counselor Gray and I got to sit on that committee, and it was a real privilege, and many, many more things. Through it all, there were opportunities to learn and to make new friends. I have been truly privileged to have friends and be friends with Jackie Nitas and Mary Moriarity Adams. I respect them enormously. I've learned skills and processes from them and from all of you, colleagues on both sides of the aisle. In my own district, I've been thrilled to see the emergence of the Central State Central Greens property. That was my first exposure to city-county projects, and it's gone from a haunted, desolate area to a thriving, vibrant community with much more to come. My thanks to the many groups and individuals who took an interest and have made those dreams come true, and especially to Derek Neber, whose passion has driven many good ideas, and the homes that are selling there now at an amazing rate. Streets have been paved in the district, crime watch groups have been formed, and during that time, I feel that the quality of life has increased for the people in those neighborhoods. One of the first projects I took part in was the Early Intervention Planning Project, thanks to Rozelle Boyd. How many of you remember Rozelle? He would not take no for an answer. He insisted this was something that I needed to take the lead on, so I did. And it was a process of creating this opportunity to protect children, as only Rozelle can, that made me passionate about the early intervention planning. It's grown, and it's become more effective every year, and I'm leaving it now in good hands with Counselor Johnson. I've been gratified by having the opportunity to host the job fair every year. It has impacted hundreds of lives, and I feel humbled to have been part of that, and I hope that those jobs are continuing and that the job fair will continue into the future. I had a great support team, with Paulette Gardner's tireless efforts to organize it, Patty Stokes and the Lakeview Church that made everyone so welcome and bent over backwards to help make it a success. They welcomed job seekers with open arms, and all the helpers that came on that day without pay to help make those jobs a reality. It has been my pleasure to serve on public safety for my last three terms. I will always admire the dedication of the policemen, the firefighters, and all of the public safety personnel who put themselves at risk every day. It was my honor to help provide the resources that they needed. Admin finance, on the other hand, could be a bear. I've been through 15 budgets, but it truly has been a pleasure to serve with the many who helped me learn the processes necessary for good government, to balance income without go of tax dollars. It isn't sexy, but it is necessary for the city to grow in a solid way. I'm not going to attempt to list the various boards and organizations I've had the privilege to be part of, except to say I respect each and every one of them for the passion they bring to the table to make Indy a better place. I know there are many more to thank, and I can't possibly mention each one, just know from the depths of my heart, thank you. I feel that I'm leaving the city in good hands, but will challenge the public at this point to educate yourself, and I'm speaking to each voter out there, educate yourself about the people that are vying to represent you in May and in November. Learn about them and see how they serve you, and then make your decision, and go vote, and I thank you all sincerely.
Counselor, thanks for you. Love you, I'm going to miss you. These are your copies here.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 181, 2019, introduced by Counselors Simpson and Gray, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, adjusts the allocation of the special purchase of tax revenue to the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation, Indigo, for the purposes authorized by Indiana Code 8-25-3-7C. Proposal numbers 182 through 184 refer to the Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Proposal number 182, introduced by Counselor Lewis, corrects the term Indy date of Esther Carter Day as an appointee to the Indianapolis Housing Agency Board of Directors. Proposal number 183, introduced by Counselor Lewis, corrects the term Indy date of Sherry Seiwert as an appointee to the Indianapolis Housing Agency Board of Directors. Proposal number 184, introduced by Counselor Holliday, approves the statement of benefits of CA Industrial Holdings LLC, an applicant for tax abatement for property... Industrial Holdings LLC, an applicant for tax abatement for a property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal numbers one-eighty-five through one-ninety-two refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number one-eighty-five, introduced by Counselor Fanning, authorizes parking restrictions on Burlington Avenue from Broad Ripple Avenue to Maple Drive in District Two. Proposal number one-eighty-six, introduced by Counselor Fanning, authorizes a speed limit reduction to forty-five miles per hour on Meridian Street from Kessler Boulevard West Drive to Ninety-Sixth Street in District Two. Proposal number one-eight-seven, introduced by Counselor Fanning, authorizes intersection controls at Evanston Avenue and Sixty-Ninth Street in District Two. Proposal number one-eighty-eight, introduced by Counselor Osley, authorizes intersection controls at Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Street and Langsdale Avenue in District Eleven. Proposal number one-eighty-nine, introduced by Counselor Osley, authorizes intersection controls at Indiana Avenue and Gent Avenue in District Eleven. Proposal number one-ninety, introduced by Counselor Johnson, authorizes turn restrictions at Washington Street and Audubon Road in District Twelve. Proposal number one-ninety-one, introduced by Counselor Simpson, authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the residential subdivisions near Sixty-second Street and Michigan Road in District Seven. Proposal number one-ninety-two, introduced by Counselor Simpson, approves the declaratory resolution designating the establishment of the White River Rocky Ripple Flood Control Improvement District. Proposal number one-ninety-three, introduced by Counselors McQuillan, Cordy, Feaster, McHenry, and Fanning, refer to the Ethics Committee, amends the Ethics Code to adopt a new provision requiring sexual harassment training for all city and county elected officials, counselors, and certain supervisory-level employees of the city and county government. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders and Priority Business. Proposal numbers one-ninety-eight through two-hundred-and-four are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on March the twenty-ninth, two-zero-nineteen. If no councillor wishes to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Public Hearing, and that first item is Proposal Number one-four-nine, refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number one-fourty-nine-two-zero-nineteen approves additional appropriation totaling two-million-two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-five-hundred dollars in the two-zero-nineteen budget of the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services Consolidated County General Fund to support demolition costs associated with the Oak Tree apartment site, appropriate grant dollars from the Nina Mason Polyam Charitable Trust, the Division of Animal Care Services for the Indy Cares Initiative, and support the purchase and equipping of thirty vehicles to replace aged and higher-mileage vehicles and their fleet. Brian Madison, Director of Business and Neighborhood Services, presented a PowerPoint presentation detailing the proposed additional appropriation request. After debate, as well as a failed motion to remove portions of the proposal, as well as a failed motion to divide the question, Counselor Lewis moved, seconded by Counselor Robinson, to send Proposal Number one-fourty-nine to the full council with a due-pass recommendation of the motion carried by a vote of four to three, with Councillors McQuillan, McHenry, and Coats casting the negative votes. And I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we divide Proposal Number one-fourty-nine into two parts as follows. First, for the additional appropriation in the amount of eight-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand dollars for the purchase and equipping of thirty vehicles to replace vehicles and their fleet. And second, the remaining additional appropriations and deposits as requested in Proposal one-fourty-nine to be considered separately, and, Mr. President, I so move.
As this motion is to divide the question, there will be no debate on the motion, and we will take a vote. Madam Clerk, if green would be to support this motion, and red to oppose this motion. The motion fails eleven to thirteen. We will proceed then with comments from councillors on Proposal one-four-nine. Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the honor of serving on the Rules and Public Policy Committee, and we examined Proposal Number one-fourty-nine, I think, a couple of weeks ago in committee. It was a little unusual that we had three different fiscal issues thrown into one proposal, but as was mentioned in the remarks a moment ago with the report, the first two parts, the first, to demolish a dilapidated apartment complex which has been harboring crime, I believe it's in Counselor Jackson's district, very close to mine, that was a good portion of the proposal. Secondly, there was a pass-through grant with some federal or state dollars with no fiscal impact. But what troubled me and a number of other councillors was the third part, which established eight-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand dollars for Business and Neighborhood Services to buy new vehicles. BNS was in attendance at the committee, and we asked them to come up and explain why this was not part of the original budget presentation last fall. As I'm sure everyone at home knows, the City County Council basically has one job, and we're the fiscal body of the city-county. Last fall, we, on a bipartisan basis, unanimously endorsed and passed this administration's budget, with the caveat that we needed this to be the budget. We didn't want unfunded mandates. We didn't want money being asked for after we passed the budget. Occasionally, emergencies arise, but eight-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand dollars to buy shiny new vehicles for one of our departments is not one of those emergencies. This is a proposal that does not save lives, it doesn't pave streets, it doesn't do any of the things that are critical for our city, it just basically picks up new vehicles. When I asked BNS, who was in attendance, why this wasn't a part of the original budget when we had our honestly balanced budget we passed last year, I was told, the committee was told, that they had some extra money, extra revenue that had been collected during the year, and they thought this would be a good use for that money, since they had some older vehicles. As a councillor and a taxpayer, in a perfect world, I would like to see extra money returned to taxpayers, or at a bare minimum, extra money go into a rainy day fund where it can be used for something critical. This doesn't meet either of those criteria. I'm very disappointed that many of my colleagues have decided to continue to spend money after we passed our honestly balanced budget, and it is a great concern to me. I would ask all of the members on both sides of the aisle, no matter whether you're a Republican or a Democrat, to show a little fiscal responsibility and vote no on this proposal. Thank you very much.
Counselor Simpson.
I would like to thank Counselor McQuillan for that real political view on trying to take care of the people who need the vehicle the most. We just had it in public safety, Counselor Robinson, where Community Correction got some extra money from the state that they wasn't aware of it, and they came to us, and we passed it for them to do some improvement and stuff like that. So I'm a little disturbed that you would sit here and think that our employees doesn't deserve to ride around in better vehicles, and if these vehicles are what I think they are, they're in poor shape, and I don't know how they're going to do their job, first of all. And I think that this money right here is well-served. We get this kind of extra money all the time, grants, it's nothing new. You've been on this council long enough that you've seen this before, this is nothing new. I'm just concerned that we would just tell the Animal Care Service no on vehicles when everybody's calling about picking up dogs, cats, you know, strays. I think Animal Control have done a fabulous job since they've been there, and I think this is not a way to reward them for their good service, but I would say I would encourage my colleagues to definitely vote for this, because we're sending a message to Animal Control and to the taxpayers who are out there, they're calling Animal Control, that we care about them dearly, and I want it to pass.
Any additional comments from councillors? Right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to Proposal Number one-fourty-nine?
I'm just thinking about the Oak Tree Apartments. I'm just thinking about the Oak Tree Apartments and how long it's been a eyesore. I'm also thinking about...
You'll have two minutes.
I'm also thinking about, I had about seventeen feral chickens roaming the neighborhood where I live. Animal Control came out and cleaned the mess up. They took seventeen feral chickens that were out roaming, tearing up people's flyer bids, and doing other things on their cars and stuff that they left parked out overnight. So I think that they should be rewarded in a way, and I just think this apartment complex, the Oak Tree Apartments, is in an area now that's really depressed, and they need to have some attention to tear those apartment buildings down right now before we pass into another administration. So I just think they've done a good job on getting rid of those chickens for me, so I think they should be rewarded.
Hello, I am Sharia Caldwell. I'm with CAFE, Community Alliance of the Far East Side. I'm the Community Development Director and also a Far East Side resident. I'm speaking in regards to the Oak Tree Apartments. Our community just needs for those apartments to be demolished. They've had over sixty police runs within the last two years. They were just set on fire just last week. It's a huge blight and a huge disservice to our community, so we hope that this vote will go in our favor. Thank you.
Mr. President, council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Clara Pope. I am the newly-elected president of the Far East Side Community Council. We represent the residents, community organizations, as well as the businesses in the Far East Side regarding making sure that we are a voice regarding the needs and services that need to be provided in our area. I'd like to say that this proposal, one-fourty-nine, by any means necessary, needs to be passed. The buildings are basically deplorable, it is a health hazard, it is something that I don't believe anyone here would want to have established in their neighborhoods. We understand the work that needs to be done to get it done, and so therefore, we are expecting and anticipating for you to move forward in making sure that the needs of the residents and the needs of the community is first and foremost in all that you do. I want to give a quote, my own quote, regarding this situation, because I do believe in supporting the residents in terms of living life to the fullest capacity, and we look to you to help make that happen. I believe that life is destined to change, so why not make change for the better? Thank you.
My name is David Bright, Political Director for the Department of Public Works, Local seven-twenty-five, and we also represent Animal Control. When you go to work every day and you work hard, you want the best equipment that you can possibly have, and the people over at Animal Control deserve good working equipment. I don't know if you've ever been chased by a pit bull. I have, and I had to call them to come out, and some of the vehicles that they come out in are wide and run, you know, but he did do a little chase, didn't turn out too well in his favor. But they deserve good vehicles. I'm just saying that. And also, being in District Fourteen, Oak Tree needs to go. It's a lot of crime on the east side. You don't have to really think about this too hard. It's not a D or an R, it's about the people and the community. So I would hope and pray that y'all would do the right thing and take care of the people that take care of the people in this city. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments from anyone in the audience? Right, seeing none. Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think there's any question to a soul in this room about the Oak Tree Apartments needing to come down, and even Animal Care Services and BNS possibly getting a new fleet in the future. I think the biggest issue here is, Counselor McQuillan said, that we're giving out dollars that were not in the budget and not included, and it's only March, we're halfway through March. When does it end, and when do we actually cut the bleeding when we have these requests from almost a million dollars already here in front of us? I mean, I agree with everyone here saying that, you know, Animal Care Services deserves the best with the line of work they do, and we can give them the best responsibly with budgeted dollars that are included during budget season, and we pass it as a truly balanced budget. I just have a lot of hang-up with putting a million dollars out here already, when, almost a million dollars, when we don't know what's going to be next for us. I'd like to see us, in the future with coming budget season, try to plan this a little bit more responsibly than what has apparently been done. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've been battling this issue for ten years, as far as Oak Tree. Definitely, there's no doubt, we have more residents here tonight to testify as to why we need to support Proposal one-fourty-nine and appropriate the funds for demolition of that dilapidated property. I won't even call it a property anymore. In addition to that, support our BNS people, which many know as code enforcement, having the proper equipment and tools they need. When we go to work, hopefully, we have the proper tools and equipment we need, whether it's safety devices, whether we need for our client base, whatever it is, uniforms, protective gear, and these vehicles do the same thing for them. So I advocate for not only support of Oak Tree tonight, but for our BNS department employees to get the best equipment. We're always sliding our city employees, which should always be first for us. And then, I don't know where it's coming from, but this money's coming from permit funds, so we got the public thinking we're raising taxes or getting new funds, folks were not. It's coming from a permit fund balance that we already had. So don't be deceived tonight. The truth is, this money is already here, whether it was already appropriated in the budget or not, it's two different things. We do have the money to do it, and it's what's best for our city employees, and then this proposal was best for our residents on the Far East Side, especially those stakeholders that are near Forty-second and Post Road in Oak Tree. So I encourage all my colleagues tonight to stand strong and vote yes to support Proposal one-fourty-nine. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor McHenry.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's no doubt the Oak Tree Apartments need to be demolished, and that's law and overdue, and that is a given. I think this is probably why these three themes were bundled into one proposal, is because of the definite need for the Oak Tree Apartments to be demolished. But thirty vehicles at one time is not what we really, and we heard, we need some vehicles. Some is not thirty. Thirty is a lot of vehicles. That's a large number. That's not some. So again, I agree with what Counselor Maury said on doing a little bit more planning. Here we are, this was brought to us two and a half months into the new budget. I would have thought that some of the... I would have thought that some of this would have been thought about during the budget season and started planning for then and not coming up with, all of a sudden, what else is going to come during the next few months and that is going to overspend the budget? And I'm sure that a lot of police officers would like to have some new vehicles there as well. So, you know, we're here, we're going thirty vehicles for one department. Are all the departments going to want thirty vehicle, new vehicles? Where does it stop?
Are there additional comments from councilors? Counselor Johnson.
And I know I'm the one that said earlier that I needed to be out of here so I can catch a 4:00 AM departure, but we keep hearing this phrase, "Where does it stop?", and it's an interesting one because this is the result of us predicting a certain amount of revenue, that prediction being conservative, and there being more revenue to then reinvest in a department that desperately needs it. So if, if "where does it stop?" means I hope that we continue to have conservative predictions on our revenue, we're going to keep having more revenue than we expect, then I'm perfectly comfortable with this cascading to more and more revenue coming in so we can do the things we need to do. So if your HVAC system goes out in your house and you get a little extra money, you're going to do what it takes to fix that HVAC system. We have equipment at Animal Care Services that is not functioning the way it should be functioning, probably at levels even endangering some of our employees at times. So making this investment is a smart move. It is the right thing to do. It is good for taxpayers. And the theater of this, while impressive, is not accurate to what's actually happening. We are not affecting the budget. This is projected revenues that were higher than we anticipated. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to say anything else, but I will quickly point out that in the future, if my HVAC goes out at my home, I will make a decision whether or not to replace that HVAC. However, as a member of the City County Council, it's my job to protect the pocketbooks of all the taxpayers of Indianapolis. And if the city decides they need new vehicles to chase feral chickens through neighborhoods, I think they should put that in the budget process. And I urge my colleagues to vote no. Thank you.
Are there additional comments from councilors? Counselor.
Thank you, President Ossley. I don't serve on Rules Committee. I do serve on Metro and Economic Development and Admin and Finance, which were the committees of jurisdiction for the budget for the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services, and we considered that budget the fourth quarter of last year. And MEDC considered the Oak Tree Apartment Acquisition and Demolition, and we supported, supported that unanimously. So for the benefit of those of us that served on the committees of original jurisdiction and, and weren't at the table when this came before rules, could Director Madison speak to where these vehicles are going? It was my understanding that we weren't buying twenty-nine or thirty vehicles for animal care and control. I thought they were being purchased for the inspectors that go out on the weights and measures inspections and verify the accuracy of fuel pumps. Director Madison, I was not at that meeting, but I'm confused by all this talk about buying new vehicles for animal care and control. What are, what are these thirty vehicles to be used for? Please.
Thank you. Brian Madison, Director of Department of Business and Neighborhood Services. Specifically, there are twenty-eight vehicles that we plan to purchase. Six of the vehicles will be used by Weights and Measures, which is one of the bureaus of our department. The other twenty-two are Ford Fusion hybrids that would be used by our field staff and emergency response leadership team, so the folks that respond when there's some sort of crisis in one of the communities here in Indianapolis. So we are one department, though, so we, Animal Care Services is part of the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services. The vehicles that we are purchasing for Weights and Measures can serve two purposes. First, for the Weights and Measures team so that they can keep their equipment that is sometimes used at gas stations to test, they're covered in fuel sometimes. And so we want to make sure that it's, it's in a separate space from the cabin. So they would be using F-250s, which also are used by our Animal Care Services folks. We put a cap on it so that we can keep animals in that, and we found that they serve both those functions. So ultimately, we would hope that they would be able to use these as well.
May I ask a follow-on question of Director Madison as to the source of the dollars? To Counselor Simpson's point, this doesn't arise because of a, of a grant. I mean, there was no windfall. Your source of revenue arises from fees that you charge users here in Marion County, correct?
Correct. This is not coming from property taxes. This is specifically from the permit fund. So we anticipated, when we were doing the budget, around the summer of this year, that our estimated permit fan, fund balance would be about twenty million four hundred and forty-seven thousand. As it turns out, when they completed the year-end analysis, they determined that the estimated permit fund balance would be twenty-one point three million. So we actually had higher-than-expected revenue from the permit fund. So it would be permits that were issued throughout Indianapolis, Marion County.
Counselor Coulter.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you would please come back up here, I have a couple of follow-up questions to follow up Counselor Sharia's questions. So I believe I just heard there's twenty-eight vehicles that would be purchased, yet it's saying here thirty.
Yes, correct. We are actually buying twenty-two Ford Fusion hybrids and six Ford F-250s. We will use, there's a little bit of balance left for about nineteen thousand dollars towards another sedan, and we will use our current 2019 budget appropriation to pay for the balance of a twenty-ninth vehicle. So it's actually twenty-nine vehicles.
Okay, so a couple of follow-up questions, if I may, Mr. President. So, one, why does this proposal say thirty then? And how will that additional vehicle, the sedan, be used? And then my third question would be, in terms of the hybrids that are used for various things, how is that determined what they're used for and when, such as animal control services and other things? Please.
So our goal is to replace our higher-mileage, older vehicles. So essentially, we have identified which ones have the highest mileage and the most age on them, and so we will replace them based on that. Did that answer everything, or?
Mr., Mr. President, okay. Not really. I'm still confused. I'm hearing twenty-nine, yet the proposal is saying thirty vehicles. So I'm still confused on that. And then again, how the hybrids are divvied up, so to speak, if there's some kind of process for that determining where and when and how they're used amongst all the different services?
It's, it's based on the oldest vehicles that we have. We want to remove those from our fleet. We find that we have to pay expensive repairs when there are older vehicles or have high mileage. So it's not necessarily a specific function because it, it's going to be across our department that we would take whatever vehicles are the highest mileage and the oldest and get rid of those first. So we have a list of, of those, and we've gone over that with the Office of Finance and Management and our Vehicle Ser, Fleet Services to identify which ones those need to be. Yep, still?
Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, so taking aside the ones that you retire, so to speak.
Right.
The ones that then are in commission to be used, then, how do you determine, okay, these particular ones will be used for animal control services, or these will be used for the, the other various services? How do you determine from there, based on, on, like I said, not the ones that have been retired, but the ones that are actually being used?
It's, because we have a table of the vehicles which tells us specifically which inspectors or which field staff are assigned a vehicle and how old that vehicle is. So we know where essentially they're serving, but it's not necessarily that all our vehicles in, say, one bureau are necessarily old or higher mileage. Sometimes we're able to get one or two over the years and, and replace those. But it just so happens that Weights and Measures in particular, it's, it's a matter of practicality. We want to make sure that we provide the right kind of vehicle for them. So that's why specifically that whole bureau would be getting new vehicles. And then can I, I can add one, one other thing with respect to the thirty and the twenty-nine. We originally had proposed to get Chevy Malibus and the, I, I can't really speak to what happened that something purchasing can probably better address, but we were unable to have that person fulfill what they had bid. And so we switched from Chevy Malibu hybrids to Ford Fusion hybrids, which cost a little bit more.
One more. Thank you, Mr. President. So we're still talking about twenty-nine vehicles then, correct?
Correct, correct.
So not trying to be nitpicky or difficult here, but the proposal's saying thirty vehicles. So I'm just, you know, where will that remaining money be spent then? Are we purchasing thirty or are we purchasing twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine. So we are getting, with the allocation here, we are getting six Ford F-250s. We would be getting twenty-two Ford Fusion hybrids. There would be a balance left over where we would use part of the 2019 budget appropriation that was passed by council and the remaining funds to buy that twenty-ninth vehicle. And then there's the equipment that goes along with it for those vehicles.
We can come back to you. Counselor Westler.
Thanks, Mr. President. Don't leave.
Okay.
Thirty vehicles at one time or twenty-nine, whichever the number may be, seems to be awful high, and I'd like to know how you take care of the maintenance on these vehicles? Don't you take care of how many miles and then you plan for that for the next budget hearing? Like two vehicles or three? And then every, every so many years, you replace a few vehicles, not thirty at once. This is astronomical. I don't think a lot of police, I think that one of the council brought up that we use those out on the police department. We've lost three, three cars this week in wrecks. I know that the fire department does, reduces the power trucks down to reserves, the older ones, and gets new ones periodically. So what's your plan on maintenance? And how do you determine why you just need thirty at one time, why not two or three?
Fleet Services provides the maintenance on our vehicles, so that's done with them, and they provide estimates as far as what, what things would cost to, to get them repaired. But this is actually going to get our entire fleet to be in, in a position where we can actually, on a regular basis, replace just a small fraction of our fleet. And so we would be on a vehicle replacement policy of about four or five years so that we wouldn't have to come back to this council to ask for large numbers of vehicles.
So do you have a written policy for that now?
So the Office of Audit and Performance did a study on the entire fleet for the Enterprise, including the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services. So we were a part of that study, and we are just positioning ourselves with Fleet Services and Office of Finance and Management to be able to get on that standard vehicle replacement policy.
So you have, you have a policy in place?
Yes.
What you're saying?
Yes. That was a study done by the Office of Audit and Performance, I think, March of 2018.
So what happened to last year's budget? Did you even put any cars in?
We did. We did include fifteen vehicles.
You did include?
Yes.
And you have those fifteen vehicles now?
They're on order.
So you don't have those yet?
Not yet.
So when are you, so you're all going to have fifteen new ones? They'll be here in a, in time and a manner. Then you still need another thirty or, um, twenty-nine, whichever the number may be.
Yeah. So again, that would bring our, our fleet to essentially within a few model years of each other, and we can establish a regular cycle of replacing a fraction of our vehicles each year and would be able to incorporate that into the annual budget.
Well, you just got through saying you do have a policy. Now you say we are going to do that. You haven't done it yet?
Well, we, because we still have twenty-nine vehicles that are either in fair to poor condition, they have some nine years of age or ninety-four thousand miles. So we have a number of vehicles that need replacement.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I believe it was Counselor Evans, I think Counselor Simpson, is that correct? Counselor Evans, did you have a comment?
Mr. President, I'd like to call the question.
Moving second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Down.
Show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Go to the board. Greens in support? Reds in opposition? All right. The motion carries, thirteen eleven. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 156, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 156, 2019 approves additional appropriations totaling eight hundred and thirty-two thirty-seven thousand dollars. 2019 budget of the Marion County Community Corrections Agency to purchase supplies, contractual services, and equipment. Mr. Scott Hole, CFO, said that the money would be, was unspent grant dollars from 2016 and 17 that the Department of Corrections has approved to move to the 2019-20 grant cycle budget. He said with the council's approval, the dollars will be moved into the state grant fund. Mr. Hole highlighted a couple of items that the funds would be used for, such as replacement and upgrade of kitchen equipment at the DeVal Center, money would go towards training, bathroom and shower facilities, and replacing four cargo vans. Counselor Simpson moved, seconded by Counselor Fanning, to send proposal 156 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by vote of nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been probably moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? I'm seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal number 156?
What a sick display on that last proposal. The Republicans spent six million dollars on Blue Car, which is nothing but a sham. But on this proposal, I'm just here tonight as a member of the Concerned Clergy to congratulate the mayor and Andrew Mellon for working with the Concerned Clergy to get the right numbers on minority participation as of now on the criminal justice system. I'm really glad that Andrew has decided to work with the Concerned Clergy and put our citizens to work earning that money. So I'm just glad to see that, and I congratulate Andrew. And he is a person that visits the Concerned Clergy, keeps us surprised of the number of minorities that are actually working on the job and earning money. I just wish that other projects here in the, in the city could follow the same pathway. And again, I just restate this, that this last proposal was really an embarrassment when you have people coming out in the name of Indianapolis, of our city, driving raggedy cars and raggedy equipment.
Mr. President, point of order.
When we have, uh, when we have the funds to buy new cars and so that they can represent our city properly, it's embarrassing.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to proposal number 156? All right, seeing none. Any additional comments from councilors? Seeing none, we will proceed to the board for our vote. All right. The motion carries, twenty-three to zero. There's no business under special orders, unfinished business, so we'll now proceed to special orders final adoption. And the next item on our agenda is proposal number 135, referred to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 135, 2019, amends chapter 151, articles five and seven of the code regarding council staff. Ms. Kim stated that section 151-91 adds a method to remove the clerk from office. Section 151-93 would empower the clerk with the authority to hire and dismiss non-appointed personnel in the council office and gives the clerk managerial duties over the non-appointed personnel. She stated that section 151-98 would be amended to split the managerial and administrative duties over the staff officers between the council president and the clerk of the council, as well as add removal procedures for appointed staff officers. as well as add removal procedures for appointed staff officers. During debate, Counselor Johnson moved, seconded by Counselor Lewis, to amend Section 151-91, Section B, to read, quote, "The clerk may be removed only by a majority vote of all members to the City County Council." The motion carried by a vote of seven to zero. Then Counselor Johnson moved, seconded by Counselor Robinson, to send Proposal Number 135, 2019, to the full council with a due pass as amended recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three to one. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 155, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 155, 2019, approves a transfer of three-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars to 2019 budget of the Marion County Forensic Services Agency to purchase supplies and services for the crime lab. Dan Noor, CFO of the Marion County Forensic Services Agency, stated that in this year's budget, it was anticipated that they would be purchasing capital equipment with a grant, and unfortunately, they did not receive the grant for that particular purchase. But they did receive other grants. He said that this proposal is to move funds from Character 4 to Character 2 and Character 3 to purchase contractual services and supplies. Counselor Fanning moved, seconded by Counselor Feaster, moved, seconded by Counselor Fanning, sent Proposal 155 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 157, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 157, 2019, amends Chapter 283, Article 2 of the Code regarding the membership of the Marion County Criminal Justice Planning Council. Chairman Robinson stated that this proposal was to add Indianapolis Police Chief to the Executive Committee. CFO Brown said this reason for the police chief was not added at that time, was director of public safety covered at the police department. So when the Office of Public Health and Safety was created, that took the police out of the purview of the public safety director. So that makes sense that the chief of police is now part of the Marion County Criminal Justice Planning Council. Counselor Feaster moves, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send Proposal 157 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 180, referred to Public, sorry, referred to Rules and Policy Committee. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 180, 2019, provides a technical amendment to Section 292-1 of the Code relating to defense and indemnification of employees to protect against potential challenges. That Section 292-1 is inconsistent with Indiana torts claim act. Counselor Lewis moved, seconded by Counselor Robinson, to send Proposal Number 180, 2019, to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of six to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. There is no business under special service to district councils. There is no business under new business. And so the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. Counselor McHenry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to give encouragement to everyone to participate this month in the great Indy cleanup, started last Saturday. I'd like to thank all the volunteers that came out and helped clean up along by Eagle Creek Park, on 56th Street from the Causeway West. Made a huge difference, and I know there's a lot of cleanups still going on over the next three weeks. I encourage everyone to get involved with one of those that is organized, or organize one on your own, and also to encourage people to take a bag with you when you go out walking, walking the dog, or whatever, and picking up trash. But most importantly, let's encourage people not to litter in the first place and teach our children, grandchildren, and other people about the proper way of disposing of litter.
Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am hosting a youth hiring job fair on April 25. It's a Thursday, 5 to 7, at Turning Point Church, located at 46 and Post Road. It's near that 42nd and Post Road. It's an opportunity for the young folks in that area to come in and actually get a job. We're hiring on the spot. We also have available resources for housing, mental health, addiction, abuse, anything that they may be experiencing. We're going to be there. I'll be there, 5 to 7, Thursday, April 25, to help our youth on the far east side. Anybody through the city is welcome to come. Thank you.
Very good. And Counselor Feaster, farewell. The document agenda for the meeting of council, having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
If you ever recognize this, Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment. By Counselors Gray, Simpson, Osley, Adamson, Jackson, Lewis, Robinson, and Oliver, in memory of Addison Simpson. By Counselor Osley, in memory of Doreen Sabuski, Johnson, Shirley Swannigan, and Henry Bundles. By Counselors Osley and Mascarri, in memory of Aileen Crenshaw. By Counselor Adamson, in memory of Verla Anne Adams. By Counselor McQuillan, in memory of Diane Ziegler. By Counselor Feaster, in memory of Paul Morgan, David Croucher, Elva Brackensike, Gary Nelson, Stephen Clements, and James Daly. By Counselor Holliday, in memory of Wanda Bryce. By Counselor Lewis, in memory of Sally A. Beck. By Counselor Johnson, in memory of Amanda Rorig. By Counselor Mascarri, in memory of Keith Preacher Norman and Joan Cawthorn. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request the motion to be made a part of the permanent record of this body, and the letter bearing the seal of the council and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor McQuillan. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and requests are so ordered. And hearing no further motions, we adjourned.